Thank you. Ms. Hannah, can you please call roll?
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Ms. Corporal.
Here.
Ms. Kane.
Here.
Mr. Kiesak.
Here.
Also in attendance: Township Manager Ms. Tealy Gools, Township Solicitor Mr. Esposito, Assistant Township Manager Mr. Valla, Township Engineer Mr. Kessler, Chief of Police Joseph Barterillo, Director of Building and Zoning Jim Ennis, Director of Finance Mega Boundary, Superintendent of Public Works Eric Gartmeier, Chief of Fire and Emergency Services Mark Antazewski. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next Board of Supervisors meeting scheduled for Monday, April 17th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. We have a few special items tonight, so tonight we're going to start off by swearing in Officer Michael Leonard. Chief, say a few words.
Just in time for, just time for you guys. Good evening, Ms. Payne, fellow Board members. Proud to introduce our newest officer, Mike Leonard, and for his ceremonial swearing-in tonight before the Board of Supervisors. So before that swearing-in, I am going to read a brief biography on Mike. Michael Leonard was born and raised in northeast Philadelphia. He is a graduate of LaSalle High School and also LaSalle University, and has a bachelor's degree in mathematics. Prior to joining us in MTPD, Mike spent 15 years with the Philadelphia Police Department. He spent eight years as an officer in West Philly, and then was promoted to Sergeant in 2016, and served as a patrol supervisor in the 17th, 7th, and 15th districts. Mike's been a Middletown Township resident since 2012. He has a wife, Katie, and three daughters Maggie, Claire, and Grace, and they are here tonight. Mike comes from a law enforcement family, his grandfather having retired from Philly PD. His uncle is an active sergeant with Philly PD. Another uncle is a retired warden from the Philly prisons, and Mike's brother is currently an active officer with Warrington Township PD. We're happy to have Mike join our great police department and begin his career protecting and serving the citizens of Middletown Township. And with that, I'll ask Ms. Payne, our Board Chair, to please swear in Officer Mike Leonard.
So raise your right hand. Oh wait, is this on? Is it? Okay. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Michael Leonard.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the ordinances of Middletown Township.
And the ordinances of Middletown Township.
With duty,
With duty.
Honor,
Honor.
And fidelity as a Middletown Township police officer.
And fidelity as a Middletown Township police officer.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I put this back down there? Instead of sitting back down and then getting back up, I'm actually going to welcome everyone from the Parkland group that's getting recognized tonight. So as I announce your name, just come on up to the stage. Giving out supervisor corporal has the certificates. So I'm pleased to congratulate the members of Parkland Fire Company who are recently recognized at the annual Fire Company banquet. While you announce your name, please come forward. First are the top call awards. James McFadden of the 161. Robert Barnes. Benjamin Hurstein. Joshua Konst. Jerry Barton. Next are the top drill participants. Thomas Stressman. Benjamin Hurstein. Anthony Cole. And the following were members that were acknowledged for years of service. These were the certificates, Supervisor Corporal. That's my fault. Certificates that were already presented by the chief at the banquet for James McFadden. For 60 years of membership, 19 as president. William Davis Sr. for 30 years of membership. Michael Fox. For 15 years as vice president. Yep. Slow down. Sorry. So for the 2022 Chiefs Award, we have James McFadden. Not here. Okay. For the 2022 President's Award, we have Michael Fox.
Here I am.
Here you are. It doesn't matter where I stand. Everybody's taller than me. The 2022 Firefighter of the Year goes to Anthony Cole. He's here too. Oh, she's behind you. And finally, the Parkland Fire Company wanted to recognize Sam Eckert III for 11 years as treasure. Sadly, Sam passed away in October, and his award was accepted by his wife Sherri. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors and the residents of Middletown Township, I would like to thank all of the recipients for their service and dedication. Thank you. I do want to invite Chief Antazewski to present an award.
Thank you, ma'am. The Fire Company asked to present a special award tonight, and I was asked to read a description as to what this award is about, so... Shall we call him up?
Sure.
Absolutely. Captain Ottinger, please step up to the stage, please. This has to do with an incident that happened on February 28th. The volunteer and career firefighters of Middletown Fire Services responded to a reported dwelling fire in a 100 block of Beachwood Avenue on that date around 4:00 p.m. Responding in his personal vehicle, Parkland Fire Captain Bill Ottinger was the first firefighter on location. On his arrival, he observed a two-story dwelling filled with smoke, and the resident was still inside. Ottinger entered the building without protective gear, along with a neighbor, and together they removed an unconscious homeowner to the front porch. The homeowner received immediate medical attention by our career firefighters and the Pendell Middletown EMS personnel, and was transported to a local hospital. Happily to say, the homeowner recovered and was discharged in a few days later. Captain Ottinger's actions demonstrated the dedication of our volunteers to protect our community. As these bring credit to himself, the Parkland Fire Company, and the Fire Services of Middletown Township. Just as a positive note, everything came together because the volunteers, the career staff, and our mutual aid response agencies, the EMS squad, all worked hand in hand to provide emergency services to our community, and we had a great outcome of this particular incident. So Chief?
It says Captain William Ottinger, Parkland Fire Company. "On February 28th, 2023, without the protection of PPE, SCBA, or a hose line, you entered a smoke-filled dwelling where you located an unconscious elderly female and removed her to safety before returning to search for other occupants. Your bravery and dedication in total disregard for your own safety resulted in a successful rescue." Thank you.
I noticed that Representative Hogan is here tonight. I didn't, I don't know if you have something for Mr. Ottinger that you wanted to give him? Do you want to, you can come up and, and, you know.
Thank you very much. My, my name is Joe Hogan. I'm the new state representative for the 142nd District, which encompasses a large portion of Middletown Township. One, one of the great things I'm learning about this new job is that I am able to recognize individuals in the district that exemplify what we expect for all of our citizens. Mr. Ottinger, you're one of those examples tonight. I have a citation from the Pennsylvania House of Representatives, as well as a citation from the Senate of Pennsylvania on behalf of Senator Ferry, who could not be here tonight, to recognize you, Mr. Ottinger, for your, your bravery, your total disregard for your own personal safety. It's one of those great things that I'm very glad you were there and you did it, but I hope you never have to do it again. And I think that goes for all of our fire service, volunteer, and paid, our law enforcement professionals, and our EMTs, that they enlist in this career path. They don't necessarily sign up for that risk, but it's an implicit acceptance that you are risking everything, your family, your own personal livelihood, to save another in our community. So Bill, if you could come up, I'd like to just read a portion of this one for the record here. It's, "Whereas William Ottinger is being honored for his recent display of heroism, on Friday, February 28th, Mr. Ottinger was en route to a fire call when he selfishly entered a dwelling fire and rescued a victim. And now therefore, the State House of Representatives of Pennsylvania congratulates William Ottinger on his heroism and offers best wishes for every future success and happiness." So on behalf of the entire 142nd District and the Pennsylvania House of Representatives and the Senate of Pennsylvania, I want to thank you.
Thank you, Representative Hogan. So I'm going to do a two-minute intermission to let anybody who needs to go, go, and we'll resume the meeting after. Okay, so next is, on the agenda is Colon Cancer Awareness Month Proclamation. Supervisor Kiesak is going to read for us.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. This is a proclamation recognizing Colon Cancer Awareness Month in Middletown Township, and it reads, "Whereas colorectal cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States among men and women combined, and whereas colorectal cancer is one of the few cancers that can be prevented with timely screening, but 1 in 3 eligible Americans are not up to date on screening, and whereas colorectal cancer is estimated to be the, by the number-one cancer killer for those ages 20 to 49 by 2030, and whereas Black Americans are 20% more likely to be diagnosed with colorectal cancer and about 40% more likely to die from the disease in other groups, and whereas colorectal cancer is expected to account for 11% of cancer deaths among Hispanic men and 9% of cancer deaths for Hispanic women, and whereas screening colonoscopy rates have still not returned to pre-COVID-19 levels, the national goal established by the National Colorectal Cancer Roundtable is to strive to increase timely colorectal cancer screening rates to 80% in every community for all Americans eligible for screening. And whereas observing a colorectal cancer awareness month during the month of March would provide a special opportunity to increase awareness and offer education on the importance of early detection and screening of colorectal cancer. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Middletown Board of Supervisors that November, or rather, March be proclaimed as Colon Cancer Awareness Month. Middletown Township Board of Supervisors proclaim this day the 20th day of March 2023."
Thank you. So I'm just going to give a little bit of information. But first, I just wanted to thank my colleagues on the board and for the employees of the township for helping to declare March Colon Cancer Awareness Month and for actually getting it advertised on that lovely Middletown monument. Many of us, myself included, thought that colon cancer was something that you weren't at risk for until you were 50 years of age or older. I'm here today to tell you that is not the case. Colon cancer is on the rise among young people, so much so that in May of 2021, the U.S. Preventative Services Task Force lowered the screening age from 50 to 45. While this is progress, it is still not low enough. A recent publication by CNN discusses that colon cancer is a borderline epidemic among younger people, people younger than 50, with Generation X and millennials being at a higher risk than our parents' generation, and researchers are still trying to understand why. I was diagnosed with stage IV at 34. It silently lived inside me for years without me knowing it. It basically had a party inside my body. Someone gave it the keys to the palace, and it was just running wild. I had over 10 spots on my liver when it was discovered, and it took me a four-day hospital stay to get diagnosed. This is why colon cancer is considered a silent killer. It went undetected for years inside of me until it reached stage IV. Unfortunately, when cases are being found in those of us below the screening age, the cancer is usually found at this later stage. When it is found at a later stage, especially stage IV, there is only a 14% chance that that person will still be alive five years after diagnosis. I'm still hoping to beat that statistic. Finding it early is paramount to survival. When it is found early, it's one of the most, one of the most treatable cancers. By 2030, researchers predict that colon cancer will be leading cause of cancer deaths in people ages 20 to 49. I'm not here to scare you, but I'm here to sound an alarm. I don't want to see anyone else go through what I've had to endure these past 18 months and counting. I'm so very lucky to even be here today. And I know some of us don't get that lucky. So I'm begging you. If something feels off, don't write it off or ignore it. Go talk to a doctor and get checked. Right now, a colonoscopy is the only test that can eliminate the risk before it turns into cancer. And until that screening age is lowered, we have to be our own advocates. So I'm asking you to talk to your family, your friends, and make sure if they are 45 or older, they get screened. And if they are younger, help educate them about their elevated risk. Until science and medicine catch up, it is up to us to help curb this problem. Together, we can change the statistics by educating others and advocating for ourselves in the doctor's office. So thank you for helping to raise awareness throughout Middletown. Let's honor those who are no longer with us by educating those who are. Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation for National Disabilities Awareness Month. Supervisor Hannah will read.
Thank you, Supervisor Payne. As a former member of the HRC for Middletown, I'm honored to read this proclamation tonight recognizing National Developmental Disabilities Month in Middletown Township. "Whereas National Developmental Disabilities Month is observed in March each year, and intellectual and developmental disabilities, IDDs, are disorders that are usually present at birth and that negatively affect the trajectory of the individual's physical, intellectual, and/or emotional development end. Whereas people with a developmental disability are of all racial, ethnic, educational, social, and economic backgrounds, and all are valued members of society who find fulfillment living everyday lives. And whereas the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors value what is important to people with disabilities and their families who are striving for everyday lives, no different than that of all other citizens. And whereas in 2020, the Board of Supervisors established the Human Relations Commission to address discrimination in the township, merging it with the previously established Disabled Persons Advisory Board. And whereas the Human Relations Commission is dedicated to promoting the value of diversity and addressing discrimination based on age, race, color, gender, identity, religion, creed, culture, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, ancestry, national origin, and mental or physical disability. Now, be it therefore resolved that Middletown Township Board of Supervisors encourages residents to support those with a developmental disability and expresses support for inclusion and acceptance of persons within our community. Further, be it resolved that Middletown Township Board of Supervisors proclaims March as National Developmental Disabilities Month in Middletown Township. Now therefore, do we, the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors, hereby proclaim March 2023 as National Developmental Disabilities Month. Middletown Township Board of Supervisors proclaim this day, the 20th of March, 2023." Thank you.
Thank you, and I, we have James Henderson that's going to speak about.
Good evening, Supervisors. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Born with spina bifida, I faced many obstacles and challenges. Issues I encountered were not just the physical barriers, but also ignorance and hate. That was when I was a teenager into adulthood. Fortunately, the past few years, I've seen awareness and inclusion more prevalent than years before. Still, it's worth mentioning that physical and emotional barriers can make individuals with disabilities feel excluded. That is not what I want, and I know that's not what you want for the disability community. Here in Middletown Township, I know we have zero tolerance for hate and discrimination. I've seen the positive strides this township has been making. I and my fellow HRC members have been putting our best efforts forward to educate and spread awareness. One of the things we have done is create a survey for disabled residents of Middletown Township. And as you may know, I organized and conducted a disability webinar on October 25th, 2022. But I believe by, by coming together, consistently working to make a more inclusive and accommodating environment, we, the HRC, can significantly increase our efforts. This would result in making diversity in Middletown Township more widespread. The social well-being of society will positively increase with less individuals with disabilities feeling excluded. Economy will positively rise with the disability community being able to socialize wherever they want to go and/or applying for the job they desire. I appreciate your time. Thank you for proclaiming March as National Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month once again. It's comforting to know that when it comes to recognizing the disability community, I have your support. It is also reassuring that you hear me and you see me. We, the HRC, look forward to continue to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Before we move on to public comment, I would like to ask our Solicitor Jim Esposito to report on some of the issues that were raised at our last meeting.
Yes, thank you, Supervisor Payne. As the Board may recall, at the last Board of Supervisors meeting, we had a couple residents raise concerns about some possible violations along Red Rose Drive. The Director of Building and Zoning and myself and Township Manager looked into them. The one property, there was concerns about an expanded driveway. The Director of Building and Zoning got in contact with the owner, and that owner has now applied for a variance, has retained an attorney, applied for a variance in order to keep the driveway. That matter will be going in front of the zoning hearing board in the next month. If they don't get the variance, then we will seek for enforcing the violation. The other property had to do with concerns about auto sales and auto body work. The Director of Building and Zoning visited the property numerous times. The Director of Building and Zoning visited the property numerous times, was able to, on one of the occasions, you know, observe a violation and with some additional evidence supplied by one of the neighbors, was able to issue some, three different violations for violations of conditions that this person had previously obtained a variance from. And so those are now issued, the violations are issued, they have 30 days to come into compliance, or we will enforce the violations against them.
Thank you. So with that, I will open it to public comment. If anybody has any public comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Sheldon Post, Red Rose Gate. I have three things that I wanted to address this evening. The first of which is something within our own township that exists that I don't know if a whole lot of people in the township know it exists, and that's the Middletown Township Youth Aid Panel. I just wanted to mention a few names of some people who we thank constantly through emails, but I felt personally that it was about time maybe publicly for them to get some thanks as well. One of the biggest issues that we have as a panel, I am a member by the way, so one of the issues that we have as a panel is finding people willing to arrange community service for some of our youths. And there's a lot of people that'll do it, but not many that'll do it where they have to be the supervising people. That's our problem. We have three individuals at least in the township who, time and time again, have stood up and helped us out tremendously with that, and I just want to give them some public recognition and thanks. One of them is Andy Foley, who is a Battalion Chief at Pendel Middletown Emergency Squad. Andy consistently arranges to rearrange his schedule to accommodate some of our youths. And the other two are some of our own here in the Township building, Parks and Rec, Paul Copair and Patrick Graham. Both constantly stand up and help us out when they can. We know that they have a lot more on their plates than to have to worry about and deal with things that we bring to them. But we also know that they take the time and they rearrange their lives sometimes, I think, to include weekends and everything else to accommodate us. So for that, we thank them. And I just thought that it was about time. I've been involved for almost six years now. I don't think I've ever heard the Youth Aid Panel mentioned at a meeting, so I thought it was about time. I also want to give, I don't know if thanks is the right word because it keeps us busy, but I'll thank our Police Department for endorsing the program and for keeping us supplied month after month. They tend to give us a, you know, a nice bunch of little kids here and there and keep us busy. And specifically, one in particular that I do want to mention, and that's our Liaison Officer, who is Officer Robison. I think just about everybody knows Missy and knows what she's involved with in the township and in the community. But Missy is a huge plus to the panel, and she, she gives us a lot of background, a lot of information, and an awful lot of help. So I just wanted those individuals to be recognized. The second thing I wanted to mention, you just stole half my thunder. I was gonna, I was, I saw last, the last month's meeting and the public comment that occurred kind of got me wishing I was here at the time just to kind of chime in, but obviously some of that's being looked into. I'll just add to that, that I've mentioned at this microphone before that I do a lot of walking around the township. And when you do that, you notice things because there's nothing else to do. You're listening to music and you're looking, and so you notice. And there's more than one, I knew that house in particular when it was mentioned. I know there's one near me where it seems like there's a welding operation going on in the garage half the time. And you see things like this, and I always say to myself as I'm walking that, you know, the township doesn't know about this? I can't imagine that other people haven't brought it up or mentioned it or whatever. And I know that at the last meeting, there was a little back and forth about, wasn't surprise inspections, I forget what the term, random, I guess, just random stops or whatever. You know, I'm not into that because that's a little Big Brother-ish, I think. But it does seem to me that if we have inspectors, code enforcers, who are in a neighborhood for a specific reason, that they have to see some of these things too. And I would just hope that if they notice something that looks a little perhaps out of the ordinary, that they might kind of check into it before somebody complains about it. The third thing that I wanted to mention kind of slips my mind here at the moment. I'm trying to remember exactly what it was. Oh, I know what it was. Our roads program. I guess that's been in operation now for about 12 to 15 years or so, I think. And if I'm right, I seem to remember that the gates sections in Levittown perhaps might have been the first or one of the first on the list of roads to be repaved and taken care of throughout the township. I'm wondering, and this is a question actually, I'm wondering when these contracts are written up or put out to bid, I guess, every year, is there something in them about what the longevity should be of the roads when they perform these paving, repavings? Can we answer that, or?
I'll mention that when we look at the road program list each year, the longevity of how long the paving will last depends on how busy the roads tend to get. So if it's a road that's paved, has a lot of truck traffic, a lot of travel, you know, it'll last a few years less than one that's maybe in a local neighborhood. Typically, a newly paved road in a kind of a quieter neighborhood should last at least about a decade or so. So the idea is by the time it gets back around, you know, it'll be about time for another paving.
That was my, sort of my follow-up question. Is this something that we intend to have as a cyclical thing? Just eventually get back to the beginning again and start over?
It would be, yeah. We assess kind of the roads that we look at over the next few years. You know, we'll look at things that might need to be repaired before a fresh coat of top paving would be done, things like, you know, ramps at the corners, or if there's some stormwater infrastructure that might need repair. And that's something that we look at with the Department of Public Works and the other departments to kind of identify those things to prepare for when the surface might need repaving as well. And if ones start to crumble a little sooner than, than hope, then, you know, we look to try to get that back on the list before, you know, a defined number of years. It's more of conditions and, and the way the road quality might last over the years.
Okay. And the reason I ask is because had it not been for the fact that we really haven't had winter two years in a row now, I suspect that many of the roads in the gates would be pretty much gravel pits at this point. Some of them are really starting to crumble up, and that's without freezes and thaws and salt and everything else. So I just wondered if it, like what goes around, comes around eventually or whatever, but that answers my questions. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Post. Any more public comment? Come up, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bob Feather, 96 Highland Parkway. You all are familiar with our concerns in Highland Park. And all I really want to say is, and through, through my numerous letters, I'm sure, I just want to say I appreciate all the time that you do put into this, that you will put into this, and hopefully you can help us with the air pollution and the noise pollution that we're doing with there. And hopefully we could come to some kind of resolution with your help. That's all.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items? Sorry.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seeing as there's been a motion and a second, are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next on the agenda is a consideration of awarding a consortium road materials supplies contract for 2023, 2024 to Eureka, Eureka Stone Quarry, Chalfont, PA in the amount not to exceed $56,000. Mr. Gartmire already beat me to it.
Good evening. Once again, the consortium bid goes out throughout Bucks County, and we're part of that consortium bid. So once again, the bids came back. There was, I believe there was five different bidders, and Eureka Stone got the bid again this year. So we're asking that you authorize for the consortium bid with Eureka Stone Quarry for this year.
Is there a motion?
Move to award the 2023, 2024 road materials supplies contract to Eureka Stone Quarry, Chalfont, PA in amount not to exceed $56,000.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Well, don't go anywhere. So next is consideration of authorizing the purchase of one 2024 International 4x2 MV 607 SBA cab and chassis for a total $103,000, $103,156. Wow.
So once again, every year, you know, we need to place vehicles in our fleet. This vehicle is replacing one of our trucks that is a 20, or I'm sorry, a, yeah, 2808. And this chassis, it's one of our smaller trucks. We're trying something new a little bit, so it's not a full 10, 10-ton dump truck. We're going with a 6-ton like we used to have. So we want to get back to a couple 6-ton trucks. And this is being brought to you, and the money is coming out of RDA funding for this truck.
Is there a motion to?
Move to authorize the purchase of one 2024 MV 607 SBA cab and chassis for Bucks, from Bucks County International of Langhorne, PA for the total of $103,156.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seeing as there's been a motion and a second, are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Gartmire.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Ennis, I believe, is speaking on the next.
Good evening. You have my March 14 memo to the Township Manager, as well as the proposed professional services agreement prepared by the Bucks County Planning Commission. The contents and purpose is that there's are plenty of properties, especially those that are within the R1 and R2 zoning districts over numerous years, that have had to appear before the zoning hearing board to request variances. And it's even just for the most minor improvements when it comes to the requirements that are specific to the building coverage percentage as well as the impervious coverage percentage. Now, over the years, it's definitely had some ideas by the township as to how to address those issues, whether it be through a zoning map amendment or a zoning text amendment or some combination thereof. But there's never really been the foundation, meaning the analysis, that would be put in place to warrant those types of amendments. And that's what basically is presented to you tonight for your consideration, is the professional service agreement prepared by Bucks County Planning Commission to perform that analysis, come up with a product as far as the level of data, and some recommendations for the township's consideration if they were to further pursue amendments to the zoning map and/or zoning text amendment. And I do need to point out that one of the reasons why it really is an issue is that anytime that these residents do go before the zoning hearing board, I shouldn't say anytime, but the vast majority of time, those variances are granted. So that's very unfair to the residents that they have to even go through this process when it's almost a given that they will get the variance granted. So with that, for your consideration, I would like for you to maybe pursue further in approving the professional services agreement prepared by Bucks County Planning Commission.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Bucks County Planning Commission Planning Services Agreement for zoning analysis of R1 and R2 residential zoning districts.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seeing as there's been a motion and a second, are there any board questions?
Mr. Ennis, can you walk me through the process of this agreement?
Sure. So what they would do is they would use primarily their geographic information system to analyze those properties within the R1 and R2 zoning districts, and even more specifically, those properties that are in the R2 zoning district that are in the Levittown area. They would really look to see how many properties aren't currently conforming to the zoning requirements, and especially when it comes to lot size, which really ties to those coverage percentage requirements that are always at issue. After they prepare a report, they would also provide some recommendations. Now, those recommendations are only recommendations for our consideration. If we were to move forward afterwards, after this analysis was performed, because we definitely now have some hard data that identifies it is indeed an issue, the township would start pursuing possible zoning amendments and/or zoning text amendments through your normal planning process, which means really through the coordination of the Township Engineer, Township Solicitor, Township's Manager, myself, and any ally else that's included. It would then, something would be drafted, proposed in front of the Planning Commission for their consideration, hopefully gain a recommendation, and then ultimately you have to be in front of your approval to actually have it be enacted to the zoning code.
And can you walk me through why we're looking at all R1 and R2 and not just those areas that we know are an issue?
Sure. So I do think, even though it's been for the last couple of years, I think more identified as an issue for the R2 zone district properties within the Levittown area, even within my brief time here, I have noticed that there's been plenty of properties within just, that are within the R1 zoning district as well as the R2 zoning district outside of the Levittown area that have gone before the zoning hearing board for similar situations. So it's really trying to analyze the entirety of those zoning districts to see if it, is it even something an issue that goes beyond the Levittown area? And if so, what are some solutions as to, as far as zoning map amendments or text amendments that could solve those issues?
And these are just the zones that are already developed, not necessarily the open space that's associated with them?
Well, I don't know if there's any open space properties within those zoning districts, most likely there are, but nothing that, what I would say that would-
Undeveloped, I should say.
Right. And, and that's not really the, the purpose. The purpose would be to maybe, maybe again, up the percentages that would allow people to not have to pursue a variance based off of the current percentage requirements, and/or have some combination of storm management, best management practices, provisions within those requirements that would maybe also allow them not to have to go through the rigorous process of appearing before the zoning hearing board and requesting a variance. So it's not really to assist, I would say, newer development. It is indeed to assist those properties that are already developed and also constantly finding issues, even when they want to just do the most minor improvements to their properties.
Any other board questions?
Could you just briefly explain how it helps our residents?
Well, sure. So if, if you even want to just do, say, a patio or a minor addition, a shed, in many, many cases, property, especially in that Levittown area and the R2 zoning district, they're already exceeding the percentage requirements. And now, that's not really a fault of their own. That was not a, what we call a self-imposed hardship. In many cases, those properties already are undersized lots for the lot size requirements of that district. So when they even just want to do, again, a most minor improvement, all of a sudden they now have to go to the zoning hearing board, request maybe a couple of percentages over the current requirement, and like I said, almost always get that variance granted. So if that's the case, then I think then we really got to kind of change the zoning code so that they're not going again through that rigorous process of paying more cost to submit a zoning hearing board application, awaiting for their appearance, having to state their hardship, and then awaiting for the decision to be rendered, all in effort to maybe do something that's pretty common now for residential improvement to a, to a normal property within the township.
Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we had discussed this a few years ago in some length, am I correct?
I was, I, my hand, my hand was on the button just to see that.
I, I think it might have been before they had joined us.
Yeah. I mean, this has been on the books as a discussion point for many, many years, and it is an enormous undertaking. And what Jim is proposing is a way to have all of this data prepared for us at a really reasonable price so that we, you know, we're always talking about data-driven decision-making and not just, you know, putting the two Jims in a room to try to craft some proposed amendments, but really getting an, having an understanding of what we're up against. And really, it is for the benefit of the residents because we have a lot of residents coming before the zoning hearing board. As Jim mentioned, our zoning hearing board is one of the busiest zoning hearing boards I've ever seen. They meet twice- They meet twice a month because, you know, not just the size of our municipality, but because anyone who wants to do even the most minor change. I mean, you have to imagine that the zoning was put on top of Levittown after it was built, right? And when that happens, and it's similar, Jim and I know, and other communities we've both worked, you know, when that happens, you have undersized lots and you have this situation. In Middletown, it's an enormous part of our community. So, so, yeah, I mean, this is really just to give you that data that will drive the team to sit down and make some recommendations. We might just have to tweak percentages a bit here or there and eliminate, you know, 50% of applications, saving the residents the time, the cost of the application, hiring consultants, you know, some of them even bring an attorney with them to the meeting. So it really is something that will help our residents.
And there's, there's going to be a process here, right? So the Planning Commission will conduct its analysis. There'll be meetings to discuss that. Then there'll be draft reports and amendments prepared, and then we'll review them, and then there'll be review and amendment processes to that. So it's, it's, this is a long and thorough process that we're undertaking, right?
Yeah, absolutely. As Stephanie already touched on, there's going to be meetings, there's going to be a final product, and really, what I think is for a reasonable cost in comparison to the overall product that they'll produce. And, yeah, it will be a analysis that will be completely in front in front of us to fully consider, and again, maybe even ask for some additional types of data points that we're going to have to actually hone in on.
Any other questions? Seeing none, and I believe there was a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the multi multimodal improvement plan update. Supervisor Vice Chair Ms. Corporal is going to do it, as also Ms. Supervisor Kane. They're both members of the steering committee for this plan. So here, Supervisor Corporal, take it away.
Hello, everybody. As Anna said, I'm Don Corporal. I'm one of the supervisors here, along with Supervisor Kane. We're on the steering committee for the multimodal improvement plan. We had our first meeting a couple of weeks ago, which was very interesting and and a lot of good feedback, I felt like. So the first thing is what does multi multimodal mean? And it refers to multiple forms of transportation. So how you're traveling from one place to the other. So more specifically, we're talking mostly about the importance of the residents in our township to have the ability to walk and bike safely within the township and have better access to public transportation, which does go along with our long-term plans that we have talked about, comprehensive plans. We've been talking about making our township more conducive to have multimodal modes of transportation. So it's, it's really a perfect time for us. This plan will identify opportunities to improve sidewalks, trails, bike lanes, access to public transportation. I didn't do my thing, did I? Going to just move that? Oh, I just messed it up. There we go. Sorry. It'll identify solutions that best fit each area. The increased access to alternative modes of transportation will help reduce the independence on cars. It'll make people and the environment healthier. Obviously, people will be able to get exercise, get fresh air, will have less pollution. So it's just definitely a win-win for our community. It also will help people get to that don't have transportation, get to public transportation to be able to access buses, trains, so they can get to employment, which obviously is good for our community also. And we had talked about that brings equity within our community. This planning process will prioritize improvements which are most critical to our community. There's also a lot of federal, the federal government has billions of dollars available for infrastructure improvements. And with this plan, the township will be in a good position to secure funds for to implement the plans. There's a lot of funding out there. Can, I'm not sure. Sorry. For some reason, this isn't. Sorry, guys. I just want to be on the right page here. All right. So the project is being completed, completely funded. There's $80,000 by the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, the Transportation and Community Development Grant Program. And the committee is formed with, as I said, two of us from the Board of Supervisors. There are, sorry, I just lost my train. I'm on the wrong page. I'm sorry. We have several appointees from township boards and commissions, as well as interested stakeholders, and we have key members from the township that will facilitate the work of the consultants and carry, help carry the plan. So the plan was actually, the people that are doing it is Simon Collins, and they're a consultant consultant team that were going to help us develop this plan. We did have a team of board supervisors that looked over, sorry, that selected this firm. They are, did very excellent job. They've worked with different communities, and we were very impressed by them. They have 30 years of planning experience for the projects, and the transportation, they're the Transportation Management, TMA of Bucks County, will be assisting Simon Collins and provide local expertise. All right. Sorry, I got off track there. All right. So how do you get involved? This is the important part. Thank you. So residents will have two ways to participate in the development of this plan. The first one is there are going to be three public meetings that will be held over the coming months for residents to share ideas and to review consultant suggestions. The first meeting is in two weeks, so that's April 4th at 6:00 PM, and it's in the public hall. It's really important for you to get out and, you know, if you know anybody who's interested, if you can give some feedback, because the more feedback we have, the better planning we can do, and it helps everybody. So if you can come out, please do that. The second thing that you can do is online surveys, and they're going to be made available after April 4th meeting. And they're going to be, it says, I'm sorry, with questions about where people want to have pedestrian connections. So we had talked about there's going to be online mapping tool. It's going to be made available so residents can actually draw routes of where and connections that they want to stay. So if there's a particular place that you like to bike, that you want to make the connection go further and it kind of stops, if there's a place that you want to walk to and it's not available now, this is a good place and time for residents to really be engaged and say, hey, this is where I want to get to. How do we make this happen? So this is all kind of the feedback that they're going to use to see how we can help and make it more more walkable, more opportunities for bike riding, things like that. The survey and mapping will be part of the township website, so you can go to www.middletownbux.org, and it'll be on our social media channels as well. Next steps. So the first thing I want everybody to do is mark your calendar for April 4th at 6:00 PM. Come to the meeting if you can. If you can't make the meeting, make sure that you get on to our website afterwards. Look to see if the surveys, get your friends out there, make sure they're doing the surveys, especially if you have somebody who's interested in hiking, biking, just getting on public transportation, and getting places within the community safely. And I think we had a list of the other dates. Is that correct? Is that on our website? So go to our website, and we'll have a list of dates. There's a couple of dates that are for steering committee. There's public, public dates out there as well, and lots of good information. All right. And if you can't make it in person, there will be a virtual option as well.
No, this is just one of those, one of the things that that residents continue to to come to the podium and talk to us about is traffic and congestion. There, you know, obviously, everyone knows some of these roads around here. They are one-lane roads, and there's not much expansion we can do. But what we can do is try our best to get cars off the roads. This is one of those those solutions that helps to do that. If people can walk places, if they can bike, if they can access trails, it is less congestion on the road. So it is one of those things that, you know, as as a board member, as a newer board member coming up here, knowing that that's one of the problems in Middletown that I wanted to help address, this is something that will help address that. And I think the entire board up here is really excited about Simone Collins coming in and the the product that they've provided us and what they are going to do for us for this plan. That's it.
Thank you, and I want to thank you both for serving on the steering committee. I'm actually excited to hear, too, if, since we just did Disabilities Awareness Month, if there is any individuals in the community who see any issues with like ADA or things that we can be approved that way, please bring that to the table as well. This group would be more than happy to try and problem solve those areas. So thank you both for serving on the committee.
Thank you, Anna. And that is actually something we did talk about at the meeting, how it's important to make everything ADA accessible and really have the trails accessible to everybody. So it's important. You're right. Good point.
Thank you. Okay, so other business. Mr. Kessler.
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Mr. Valla.
Thank you. To follow up on Supervisor Corporal's point, those other two public meetings for the multimodal plan in addition to Tuesday, April 4th, are going to be Tuesday, May 30th, and then later this fall, Thursday, September 28th, all at 6:00 PM in this room.
Thank you, Mr. Valla. Mr. Esposito.
Nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Tielekles.
Nothing. Thank you.
Supervisor Hannah.
I just wanted to quickly say thank you to the Middletown Township Police Department and Honor Guard for representing us and honoring Corporal David Ordles. A bridge was dedicated in his honor on Saturday. They did an amazing job of standing up and showing respect during the dedication and also taking care of the traffic. We were joined by the Commissioners, Congressman Fitzpatrick, and were able to recognize the Vietnam veteran. I'm so proud of our township for making sure that we recognize Vietnam veterans. As a daughter of a Vietnam veteran, I feel very passionate about making sure that we take care of them, we recognize them, and we honor them. And if we can name every bridge in the township after one, I'd be happy about that. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Mr. Pizak.
I'll just, one more time, congratulate and welcome our new police officer, Mike Leonard, and also, one more time, thank firefighter Ottinger for his bravery and heroism in protecting our community.
Supervisor Kane.
I'll reiterate that recognition of our firefighters and the new officer. One of the things that, you know, as working with the fire strategy over the past year, you realize how much dedication that these volunteer firefighters have, and it really is something to to honor and celebrate because they're, they really do choose to put themselves, you know, put all of us in front of them, in front of themselves. And it really does, it really is something to honor.
Thank you. Supervisor Corporal.
To go last, right? Again, I just want to say, like everybody else, I appreciate the firefighters for all they do for our community and put themselves on the line, just of course, like our police officers in our community. And I wanted to congratulate everybody who got awards today, especially firefighter Ottinger for his heroism, and I wanted to welcome our new officer.
And with the, not really wanting to be redundant, but I just want to welcome Officer Leonard to Middletown. It was a privilege for me to be able to swear him in. I'll be honest, that was like something I was very excited about doing ever since I joined the board. So thank you for giving me that opportunity to share in that as well. And congratulations to all the firefighter servicemen who are up here tonight. And I, there's really not enough words to say. Mr. Ottinger, who was a former board member. So he serves in so many ways for the community, and the community is better for having him to be a part of it. So I'm grateful that we were all able to share in that special moment tonight. With that, I'll make a, accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to-
Adjourn.